No pick-me?
I'll make a motion to approve the application to have the salmon bait at the city park. Is that where we're having it? Yeah, as usual.
Yes, and I would like the honor of seconding that.
Seconding.
Call, please.
Weisen?
Yes.
Camino?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Ike?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We hope to see y'all there for the sixth year.
Of course, we'll be there.
I propose ordinance number 307, ordinance granting a non-exclusive gas utility franchise to Northwest Natural Gas Company. Fixing terms, conditions, and compensation for such franchise, replacing every bill of ordinance number 203 and declaring an emergency.
All right, you have all, you should all have a copy of proposed ordinance number 307. Just a little bit of very brief background on this. Our existing franchise with Northwest Gas did expire in 2015. This May 3rd, you did meet with our attorney, talked about proposed agreement that Northwest Gas had provided. Chatted about it in executive session, so we won't talk about that. But since the major meeting, our attorney has been negotiating with their attorney. And what you have before you is the result of that negotiation. I would note that from the existing ordinance 203, which is the expired franchise agreement ordinance. Really, the main difference is, is that we are increasing our franchise rate from 2% to 5%. We are limiting the term. The old agreement was a 20-year term. This one will be a 10-year term. And really, that's the primary differences between this new proposed and the one that expired last year. So, if you're ready to start the adoption process, I will ask unusual. Would you consider having a motion to read the ordinance by title only at first and second readings, as opposed to reading it in full?
Mayor, I know that we have the first reading by title.
Second. Call.
Camino?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Grant?
Second.
Weisen?
Yes.
You said the first reading.
Yes. Well, I can make the motion at first and second reading.
We'll just have another discussion. Okay, so, for proposed ordinance number 307, an ordinance granting a non-exclusive gas utility franchise to Northwest Natural Gas Company. Fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise. Replacing and repealing ordinance number 203 and declaring an emergency. So at this first reading, any questions or comments from anybody in the audience? I'm not hearing or seeing any. I would also add, we have no written comments. This has been made available for public for a week, and so we don't have any written comments. So, if you're ready to make a motion to adopt that at the first reading.
So why do you like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt from the first reading ordinance number 307.
Can I just say?
Call, please.
Mathel?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Weisen?
Yes.
Camino?
Yes.
See, that motion passed unanimously, so it's entirely up to you if you'd like to proceed with the second reading this evening. Okay, then I'll ask for a motion. You would consider reading by, the second reading by title only?
I'll make a motion that we consider the second reading of ordinance 307 by title only. Second. Call, please.
Grant?
Hi.
Weisen?
Yes.
Camino?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
So, second reading of proposed ordinance number 307. An ordinance granting a non-exclusive gas utility franchise to Northwest Natural Gas Company. Fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise. Replacing and repealing ordinance number 203. Aren't you glad I'm not reading the whole thing? And declaring an emergency. So again, a second reading, any questions or comments? Oh, we have, I have a question.
The emergency being that there is nothing in place at the time?
No, actually, thank you for asking that. Declaring an emergency, our city charter is structured in that when the city council adopts an ordinance, and they have to adopt it first and second readings. That ordinance is not going to affect for 30 days unless we declare an emergency. If we declare an emergency in the ordinance, it becomes effective immediately upon the second vote. And really, we put it in almost all of them because of task keeping, not to have to track the 30 days, so, good question.
It is a good question because I had that same question about, you know, because it came up with the Oregon State Legislature, which originally declares an emergency on every piece of legislation that they have to get it enacted right now.
Any other question?
Question?
Yeah, no.
Northwest Natural Gas doesn't have any competition for this negotiation, does it?
Well, they didn't, but they could. It is a non-exclusive franchise agreement. So if another gas company came to town, they could approach the city and ask for a franchise agreement. But no, there was no competition in this negotiation. Any other question? So if the council's ready to move to adopt at the second reading?
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt at the second reading of ordinance number 307 and ask that the mayor sign the ordinance.
Second. Call, please.
Weisen?
Yes.
Camino?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Thank you. That's not too bad.
Item C, authorized expenses, LLC, BDA, planning committee for training. At Salem on the 29th, September 2016.
You have five of your planning commissioners that have voice interest in attending this training. The registration is $75 apiece. And I figured the mileage to Salem, 142-ish miles at 54 cents a mile, so $77. And then because it starts at 1:00 and ends at 4:30 in the driving time, I added another roughly $50 for maybe a lunch or after meeting dinner. So about $200 per person to attend, which if all five of that voice interested do register, that would be a total of $1,000. We're asking for your authorization of that.
Question, do we know if, well, I imagine it's updated training anyway, but have any of them already had this training?
I think perhaps one, excuse me, perhaps.
I think it's a great idea, I'd like to make a motion that, Mr. Mayor, that we approve up to $200 each per member of our planning commission would like to attend the planning commission training session.
Second. Call.
Camino?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Weisen?
Yes.
Thank you. I only have one item, of course, on it's, the top of it says WAVE CoastCom. It's actually from CoastCom, and they have a franchise agreement with the city. And they are asking for your approval to transfer said franchise to Asound Broadband, which is doing business as WAVE Broadband. This room is presented to you for your information because I believe by next week, Tuesday, we will have an ordinance to bring back to you for your consideration at the next meeting to approve this transfer. Right now, employees of O.R. are working on that. That's all, of course, fine.
So I heard that, and I, and just when I, I'm under, I just got a contract with CoastCom because they brought fiber into my two businesses. First two down. They could do that to, like, government business or to business, they can't do it by two residences because of a previous agreement with, I think, WAVE that buys service from CoastCom. So now, I don't know if I'll take it or not, but it is what it is, land is acquiring, CoastCom. Weird. They're buying, it looks like they're going to accept an offer. Like my, my CoastCom representative, I'm sorry, I can't discuss that. I can neither confirm nor remind that that's happening. I don't know, I hope it's good for the people, you know? You know, if they have, you know, fiber, you know, throughout the city, and are able to offer it to local customers, I think that would be huge.
Thank you, really, that info, appreciate that. Any other correspondence?
That was all.
Ready? Every word? City staff report?
I don't think, I have anything to talk about. The major's going to be on the ballot, candidates are filing, are going to be filing to be on the ballot. I guess I would just announce that we do have three and a half council positions open, and the deadline is August 30th.
Okay, you ready for my long report? Okay, I'll start off with reservoir, cleaning our drinking water reservoir, the raw. It's quite a job. We got the water drained out, and we were really surprised of how much silt and material's in there. About eight to 10 years ago, we suffered a pretty good slide up behind the reservoir. And over the years, I would say 90% of that slide ended up in the reservoir. Ended up in the creek, a lot of time through rain runoff, and it's, there's quite a bit of silt and mud in there. The, existed, we found that why we're having problems with our sluice gate is there have been, we found everything from a half a bicycle to croatad trout, and twine, and cable, all kinds of vertical things around it. Like sandbags, so, runts. But we got all the fish out, we were able to run the creek actually through the center of all the silt and then through the outfall pipe. Once the gate was open and into the stream and outfall. So, we get our due diligence on saving the truck. There's a lot of cutthroat in there, and all the salmon ended up coming to South Creek by the, oh, yeah, that. So there was quite a bit of bullhead in there, and small sticklebacks, and cutthroat trout.
The cutthroat trout passed away?
No, no, we got them through, through the stream.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Great fish.
So, a lot of them move upwards or to, or upstream. And when they sense water going out, it naturally went up, and, which is great because what those fish will do is come back down there and throw in the ocean. It happened before. Anyway, it's going well, it's a big job, and most of the trucks are going through town. We're making an effort to clean the road. I have one of the guys on the crew, Dean, who's the temporary employee that I hired. He washes the dump trucks as they leave. One right after another, to keep the mud out to the minimum. There's still a bit that is getting, but we'll make sure we address that. A little coke is going real well there. That's going to be a good, solid fill material in the natural eyes. It's already drying, you see the dust when the trucks going out. But hopefully, when that's all said and done, it'll be, you know, sorry, it's already cleaned up. They're going to broom as they go through and do the, so.
They're either leaving, or they're half of the way to go.
Well, everything's been probably drying back. We don't know where all that came from. There's fishing rods, we've got all kinds of stuff in.
Original inside, don't know world of places we.
Somebody could probably try to chuck it off the dock with the, with the. So, it's probably going to be into next week. We were thinking Friday, but maybe Monday, Tuesday, till they get all the debris out. We're working quick, quick as they can, they're expediting. So, the other issues, I had an idea, we were talking about parking, this was brought up. Larry and I talked about this, our city planner and I, about Vista, where we did the, where we have a pump station. There's a vacant lot next to Vista. It'd have to be a conditional use, but it's an area where we could possibly have off, one-on-one parking. And maybe try to integrate, maybe follow recycle, possibly cardboard in a fenced area, utilizing some of what Vista has that's fenced off. And then parking, you could possibly get up to 20 to 25 spots in there, including the ADA car.
We own that right now?
We own it, yeah. We have to, we have to clear, there's already existing storm sewer and a catch basin in there. It would be paving, compaction, or gravel compaction, and then pave it. Probably extricate a curb and then access to the culvert. So, I could do some research on that, but it would also be a great spot. But that's just all if there's a conditional use and stuff, because it is a kind of residential area. But we'll do some homework, see how the neighbors deal about that. But I'm just trying to buy the council to see if you guys think that's something that we should look into and find out what the cost would be.
I mean, if, even if they didn't want public parking, it might be a place for our vehicles, though.
Yeah. It's, it's a field now, it's probably a hundred by, I think it's 100 by 50. So, it's a pretty good sized lot, but it's just a field right here, a grassy area. So, there's, there's a tree in there, and there's a house neighboring it, but there's a pretty good sized hedge, and it's just behind a coffee shop. And a pump station's there, so it's already a good city facility. So, anyway, all up in the app, it'd be a great spot too for maybe the recyclers. The neighbors, you know, I have to do some checking with neighbors to, you know, a lot of people really want the model, and there's really nowhere to put it. Other than coming up with the ideas, I maybe have folks try it, or Canadian or something coming up with where to put the cycles. The ODOT bypass, so ODOT's moving forward with having to get a permit for, they told us they need one at first, now that, so I'm submitting the permits for the bypass. We're going to have a valve inserted to isolate the 10-inch main that feeds Morocco, and we'll be able to keep Morocco and water through Oceanus. At, with a six-inch and a four, so it still creates 10 inches of water from them. So, isolating the tent still gets, in doing what we're doing, still gives them the same amount, but through different valvings. In Rocky Creek, we're going to run through a five-inch tube type pipe on the side of the road while they're doing the culvert. So, we're going to be tube-fed our raw water to the treatment plant approximately 800 feet for probably a month, maybe, maybe six weeks for this temporary line. So, we've got the material, I'm just doing all the paperwork with ODOT, because they're going to give us a deadline and say, you know, move your, move your stuff, we're putting in our culvert. So, I just want to be ready for that. So by next meeting, I'll probably let you know for sure where we're at. Gas is also expediting there. They've got to move their gas main and PDS midlines, WAVE, everybody's involved in this. So, I have a paving of Point Street, remember we were doing, we did brand-new water main, addressed storm sewer on Point. It's the very end row, it's about 750 feet in length, and it runs from the end of South Point to Cliff Street. And it's called Point Avenue, and it's, it's right in the very end of South Point. We've installed a brand-new water main and addressed storm sewer, all new meters, litter boxes, and it's ready to be paved now with just an overlay and I think no curbs or anything like that. Some of the neighbors are going to do their own apron. So, the city, as we did Cliff Street and we did Point Street, the city just went through the overlay. If folks wanted that apron done to their driveway, they would have to absorb that cost. So, it's saying those are these, these fights. And some are jumping on board, and some are just maybe head gravel. But I got a price quote, this would be the final phase, this was kind of last year, we've been stealing it together, but the cost is $13,000 to pave 750 feet of, I think it's 10,800 square feet. Which is a pretty good cost for asphalt at two inches. So, I did call, there's only one other company in the area that paves, which is Gaddis, and they aren't currently making asphalt. They're working on their own, so maybe in the future, I'll definitely let you know, but Road and Drive Way is the only company that is actually doing asphalt.
So can we, can we make a motion to approve Road and Drive Way for?
Yeah, for.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second. I'm sorry, two seconds.
Oh, me.
Okay.
13, now, there may be some prep that our crew will do, so, I'm just not sure on prep. But if I have to have them do that, it may, it may just be probably less than $1,000 more to do the compaction, the sweeping, and prep before the paving. Because I tried to get our crew to do it, I just don't know how busy our guys are going to be. So, but that's something I can, okay, that's just the majority of it. All right, the next thing?
What, what, what?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, sorry. So the motion is to approve Road and Drive Way contract for the, for $13,000 for the.
$38,000, yes. And if we, yeah, so I was just letting you know, there is prep work that our crew can't do, and they have to include that part. We can include some, maybe up to $1,000 more on that.
You want to ask your motion maker if he would consider?
Do you want to add maybe $1,000 for prep?
Yes, so, let's add, can, can we put it as a contingency up to $1,500?
Yeah. Perfect.
Okay, and.
Sorry?
Call.
Oh, Mathel?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Weisen?
Yes.
Camino?
Yes.
This is the final puzzle for South Point Street, all overlay and, yeah, it's, it'll be water main, we're all PVC, you know? All Cliff Street, one more asbestos pipe. Yeah, great, so, that's one. We're working on North Point next, that'll be on the radar for the next couple of. Okay, I'm getting into some of the dilapidated structures through town. I have notice that I have sent to, this is my compliance officer's for ordinance violations. 20 Graham Street is a dilapidated structure that's behind the Whatnot Shop. It's kind of a four, five-plex. It's white, sits just on the hill behind the Whatnot Shop. It's vacant, a lot of complaints, I've got numerous complaints. I've sent the lady that owns it several letters stating that if you don't comply, it will be referred to the city's attorney's office. At that time, the city council may require them to move forward with legal action against your property. And I did the 15-day notice, no return, and this was back in early part of June. And no, no word or response or anything saying, yeah, I'm going to have some be cleaned up. There's everything from debris to vegetative growth to vermin.
I wonder, have we, do we know that maybe this, it was a, don't need to know the name, was it a woman owner? Okay, and do we know if she has passed away, or is?
She lived, no, she's been paying the water on it, and she lives in California. And we've sent letters, we have one return.
What was it, what letter did we send?
Well, the June one was now certified, we do with these. And then your latest one, whatever day that was, Ray?
Yeah, it was, it was July, July 6th.
So I'm taking it up to the post office, this second letter, mailing it certified, and picked up the unclaimed one from the last mail. On the same day. But when we haven't mailed the second one, so.
Well, the unclaimed one, the, one of them did go through. We sent one just regular mail, and then one certified, and the certified came back.
Right.
So just, when it, when a certified, that's something I don't understand. When a certified one comes back, does that mean that they either weren't there or they refused it?
It's, it's all we know is it was unclaimed.
I can't tell you what post office, but it really wasn't for me because it was a different corporation. Sent me a letter today, it's not me, but this other corporation, and the mail person put it in front of me, you want this? Yeah, so they could turn it away.
But on our end, all we know is.
I've also run into a situation, standard practice from one of my attorneys, that said, you want them to get it, don't certify it. Send it to a regular mail or priority mail, and you can get a receipt that it did go into the box. You know, it was delivered, whether they read it or not, we don't know, but that's why that one didn't, they, they got one.
They got one.
We have, we have. We can, the vermin or.
It would come back as a turd, so. So, what I'm asking the council for, for this building at 20 Graham Street is if I could refer it to Pete Getner's office. We have, the council worked on the crandall lot over here with, and we got quite a bit of response, rather than my letter. Once it came from the lawyer's office, it seemed to, we got action. So, I would love to have the council let me move forward with having been dropped a letter professionally and giving them all the ordinance issues and all the information that I've done so far. Which is what Pete's office asked for last time.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Mr. Widener to contact and work with our city attorney to draw up some paperwork to.
I guess we're, yeah, moving forward with legal action against this set of properties, I guess.
I'll second. 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 Call.
Grant?
Yes.
Weisen?
Yes.
Camino?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is, we're all familiar, it was back to about 8,400, the crandall lot over there. They were working with the. They were working with the city attorney, myself, and we've got the lot owner, Mr. Crandall would come off here and he made a kind of an agreement with the owner of the Burlwood building to get all the R Ds off the lot, get all the garbage cleaned up and nobody actually living on the lot. I guess you could store vehicles if they're, you know, in orderly condition, you just cannot live in them at all. And you can't have a business on there, there's so many firewood, in fact, it's kind of still are as of today. So this council meeting was the deadline and I did get a notice from the owner of the Burlwood stating that nobody is living in those vehicles as of today. And that he is going to install a fence with an agreement that he had with the owner. So this has been kind of delayed until we, you know, this meeting and we've been going around, around, this has been going on for over here, you guys know what the history is. He's kind of negotiating now, the owner of the lot is Crandall, with the Burlwood, Mr. Martin. So I don't know, my feeling of this is, we've kind of been giving the runaround, the city in the past. I suppose, do you want me, or does the council want me to wait and see if this is really, no one living there? The business of selling firewood has ceased and in his agreement, he told Mr. Crandall that he's gonna build this fence and store the material on there and then after September first, he's going to buy the lot and purchase the lot from him. So this was kind of an agreement prior to that. So I kind of, Larry and I talked about it a little bit and I think the mayor and I discussed it a little bit, but.
Which lot is that?
Right across.
Right across the street?
Next to the Burlwood.
Is it for sale?
Yes.
Do you know what the asking price is?
I'm not sure. We had, the city had got a quote from the Crandalls about a year ago or more.
Approximately?
I think it was over two hundred thousand. I can't remember. I don't quote them. So anyway, but I was kind of seeing what the council wants me to do from here on. We could take it back to the attorney. If we don't, if we still see quotes over there, I guess I told Mr. Crandall, the next step will be is think of a lot to, to Pete Getner's office and we're gonna move forward with the, with the fine, which is five hundred dollars a day to Mr. Crandall, not Mr. Martin, because it's his lot, we can only really, that's the lot that the people are living on and any of R Ds and stuff. And then also the wood business is on Mr. Crandall's lot. Martin has a business and he just moved it over there again.
And Mr. Crandall paid eighty and the fines that were issued?
No, we actually held off on that because our attorney told us that the council needs to declare that lot a nuisance. And you get into that ordinance twenty-nine that we're having revised. And so that's kind of why we've held off on that because there's some legal stuff we're still trying to re-land and update.
You don't have any, we don't have any option but to wait and see if he.
Yeah, it's really complicated and layered and apologized, it's been going on, getting to do like this.
We don't wanna get caught over here. And that'll do steps east and east and.
Where are we in the adoption process for this, this nuisance argument?
As of last meeting, which was July, the July, the second meeting in July, our attorney was here and he was, he had taken notes on ordinance twenty-nine and was going to probably get that back to us. Hopefully, I would say probably by the second August, he should come around.
You know, I have talked to him about that.
I'd like to see that. I mean, I don't think that this guy's gonna understand anything else to move forward until we, you know, till he sees dollar signs. With the mine is fine.
And we're gonna be getting into that settlement properties in the near future.
So we need this, we need the ordinance first, the current.
Yeah, we need a strong.
Yeah. So I could relay back to Mr. Crandall, the property owner, that there's nobody else living on there and that the wood business is back on the property. So hopefully, he said that he would never be living there after today. But that's something we need to check on and I, as the enforcement officer, need to do my research and find out.
I look at that place every day and it definitely has cleaned up and I don't see the telltale signs that I used to see that someone is living. There's still a, there's one trailer trailer, there's one shed kind of arrangement in the back that's got this clean over it.
Right.
Right. I assume that's firewood storage and there's a big firewood storage.
Right.
Right in the middle of it and then there's still that large.
Right. And if they have a white fence that they could store stuff on there, if he's got an agreement with Mr. Crandall, that's between them, but the property has to abide by its ordinances.
So let's, I guess, wait, wait till next week?
Okay, so I'll just make, kind of update and we'll just. Mr. Crandall said that if he's not abiding by this agreement that he wrote up, so just let him know and he will move forward with his attorney. So he's working, he's one of the workers of the city, he's kind of long distance away in, but, so he's, he's kind of negotiating with this gentleman that has kind of been giving him the runaround all this time, so it's just, it's hard to say. There's also an issue that I've got written, like with Burlwood having stuff on Mr. Cutler's property. So that I'm moving forward with also.
And there's a truck there now.
Yeah.
There's a milk truck over there.
So, that being said, that's running on the legal stuff. Like, the only other issue is we've had, you know, we saw in the, in the council, we've had gendraphobia in South Forty and that is, gendraphobia is a fear of trees. It's a mind item. So in other words, we've had a lot of trees in South Forty that are on parkland and they're all alders and they're leaning from the parkland because there's some conifers, that the alders getting really big, and these are big alders leaning right over these homes. And they are on parkland, I've done the research and the surveys and, so we've had our tree guy, we get bids for park traffic, we've got one guy that bid the lowest bid on the trees and there's still more to be had. So, you know, he did several, he did one, one yard at five gigantic alders leaning over a lady's house down in South.
Do you have an idea what the, did the council, how much that cost?
You know, a hundred dollars for five large alders.
Is there any way we can, they take the?
They chip it up and they, they do give big browse to folks that need firewood. He ends up, Charlie's tree, as they donates a lot of firewood to seniors in Lincoln County. So he's.
I wanna make that available to the people who do that.
There may be some more, it might be that same amount on the next one. I think we're caught up now with the problem trees in there and they are, you know, the ones that fall, so I just didn't know if that would get back to the council, but they're taking care of it. I know that the homeowners are very happy with it, we'll be forward on it, so they feel safer. So that's it, come on.
That it?
That's it. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Your comment's here.
I'm good.
I have one, two. I really appreciate Charlie and I'm trying to find your name again, sir?
Frank.
Frank. And Charlie and Frank applying and I encourage, and congratulations to Charlie and I encourage you to come back next meeting with an application. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone for coming. And that's it, we are, thanks.